Where'd Hal go?
Okay.
Hold on, Hal disappeared. I don't know if he lost service. Last night, there were interruptions and...
I heard.
I haven't heard from Aubrey. Here's Hal, he's back.
Okay, and have we heard from David?
He's not in yet. David's here, so you just wait, let Hal...
There he is, I'm sorry.
I bet you Hal's having problems.
And do we know that, is Aubrey gonna be in, do you know?
There's Hal.
Yeah, I haven't heard from him that he won't be.
Right.
Let me just make sure he's good to go.
Are all our applicants here?
I believe so, I can't see one of them, hold on, yeah.
Ah, okay, yes.
So you have, one, two, three, four, so you have four?
Yes. Would it be appropriate to raise the, that issue now before we get to the point?
Yeah, i- if there's gonna be discussion in that regard, yeah. Yeah, once you call the meeting to order, it's 7:03, if you want to give it maybe a couple more minutes and just explain to the people who are here what's going on.
Right, um, the reason that we're being, we're delaying ourselves a little bit is we're waiting for one more board member to come into the meeting. As it stands, we have only four members to be seated tonight, and in a situation where they're, because our, the ZBA rules are you have to have four votes in favor out of five for an application to prove, to be approved. And if we only have four, you have to hope for a unanimous decision. And it becomes an option for the applicant to defer or not, waiting for a fully seated board. Was that clear enough, if you think?
Yes.
I'm gonna send an email to Aubrey real quick to see if he's coming.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would it be okay if I asked Pam a question?
Please.
Pam, is there a permit on 614 East Wakefield Boulevard? Hello?
I'll tell you, am I?
Oh.
Just give me a moment, let me pull it up.
How's everybody, healthy, I hope?
Got my first shot.
Yeah, me too. Me too, I'm waiting on my second, we'll see, it's not, from what I read, you have some immunity maybe a week or so after that first shot, and it's a week or two after the second. So, you're still confined, you know, ah, hi John, how are you?
Whoop.
Hal, we can, if you want to call me tomorrow, we can talk about that, Steve Malinelli had called me on that and I had relayed to him what the situation is there. And if there's any, you know, he's, he needs a permit before wetlands for the activity he's done, which would be a no-brainer given the circumstances. And I've talked to the wetlands chairman on this, but nonetheless, I think there's gonna be modifications made to the driveway too, which will come.
Say that again?
There'll be modifications made to the driveway too, not leading down to the lake, like the rumor is, because I've heard that there's a rumor that, you know, he was gonna make a driveway down to the lake and, no. His work is, is replacing only what's there. But he's gonna be coming in, because I think he needed, I think he, I reached out to him with, because of, you know, to do enforcement.
And, and what would that?
It would be a wetland.
What are you saying to me, that he's just proceeding without any?
Without a wetlands permit. He's not changing.
What would be the course of action for the town?
To seek a permit, to seek compliance.
And if he says?
He, he's going to file. He, he's, he's coming in with something else too, I've, I've talked to Steve. Steve Malinelli is the new wetlands chair, for those who may be unaware.
Yeah, okay. Well, Phil, excuse me, my hearing batteries are dead, I'll be right back.
Alright, well, we'll wait, we'll wait for Hal to get back, and if Aubrey isn't here by that time, we'll go ahead and open the meeting.
If I seem dodgy with my answers, it's because I don't like to discuss too much if someone's gonna be coming before the board. And he may be, and if he doesn't, it's a wetlands matter.
Okay, well, we won't wait for Aubrey any longer, he may show up shortly. This is the Town of Winchester Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. Called to order at 7:08 approximately, 7:10. PM, being held on a Zoom platform as a remote meeting. Tonight, in attendance, we have myself, Philip Allen, Hal Wilks, Paul Marino, and David Carter. Excuse me, John Pollack has recused himself from this hearing, so will not be able to participate as a member of the board, so.
And just if you would, that's because he's within, he's...
100%.
Okay, perfect.
Right. So, anyway. The way that hearings go before us, if you're not familiar with our process, is that the applicant, we call the, we open the hearing on the application. We, the applicant has the opportunity to present their application and their proposal and talk about it to whatever extent they like. The board then gets an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, and we, that discussion takes however long it takes. At that point, we open the public hearing to public comment, to anybody who's present who wants to speak to the application. And after the end of those comments, the applicant has the last word and gets to wrap up whatever. We close the public hearing, and then the board can discuss any issues that were raised that they, we feel we need to talk about, before we make the motion on the application and vote. Now, because we are only four members tonight, and we must have a unanimous, we would have to have a unanimous approval for this application, then it becomes the option of the applicant to, to, to continue the hearing until our next meeting when we are more likely to have a full complement. But it's, it's entirely up to the applicant, we will proceed if you wish, we do, we do so, once we call your, well, and actually, I guess we're, we don't have to call, the first item was noticed as being continued, so we can go right on ahead. I'll go ahead and open, excuse me, zoning board of appeals application 21-5259, a special exception for the location of 222 East Wakefield Boulevard, for 28 by 22nd floor addition and relocation of the front door with overhang. With that, with that, we'll turn the floor over to the applicants, Mr. Goncalves, and I guess Mr. Clausen, you're here for?
Yes, correct.
Right, so, it's up to you guys to, to present, to present your proposal.
Well, I'm not sure what to do here exactly.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, I really should, I should get clear with you, do you want to proceed tonight? Or do you want to wait until we have five members seated?
Another month, right?
Yes.
Did you understand what he said to you, Michael?
I did, I really did, yeah, unfortunately.
Okay. Tonight, if you do your presentation and we vote, you need a unanimous vote to pass.
And what's the downside of that?
It's your call. Okay, if you postpone it until we have a full quorum, five members, because our rules are, four out of five have to vote to get what you need to have an approval. Tonight, you will need a majority, all four of us have to vote in your favor. Because we don't have the fifth man, member seated.
Right, in other words, you, you run the, you have a, you have a, there is a little bit of wiggle room in having the one, you know, out of five of us, we could have one person who opposes the application and sway the rest of us and still get your project. If you, if we move forward tonight, if all four of us do not support your project, then we deny the application and you're back to square one.
And what is, that means resubmitting everything, do it, it's not just next month?
No, no, you would have to completely, you'd have to reapply entirely, under a new application.
But they continue, just to be...
We can't just continue it here?
You can continue it, yes.
Yeah, then it goes, I think he's thinking now, he's gotta put up more money and everything.
No, no, we could, we could continue it, and, and that way, nothing is decided tonight, but it still means that we wait another month. If we move forward to make a decision tonight, that's it, if you aren't successful, that's when you would be faced with making a whole new application. If we continue it, there are no expertise, there's, is there extra notification, Pam? So, you know, there's, there's no additional work on your part that has to happen, or expense on your part that has to happen to, to continue it, it just is more time, but...
You just, yeah. Which I'm living in a cottage that isn't mine, someone I sold it to that's also trying to get stuff done, it's just hard to, you know.
Yes.
Very difficult.
Also, Philip, for clarification, if there is a denial tonight, I believe we cannot reapply the same application.
That's just a variance.
Oh, it is, okay, that's what I was looking for clarification on that, okay.
In other words, you could...
I didn't hear that, Pam, what'd you say?
So, when a variance is denied, you have to wait six months to resubmit unless you, it's substantially different, you know, which is, you know, up to the board to determine whether or not, but that's, he's applying for a special exception, which is not a variance.
So, with the special exception, could I effectively reapply by next month?
Yes. If, yes, yes, there's, there's, there's not that same restriction in terms of...
I could be heard, denied, and still do it again next month, right?
Correct, with the extra expense of another filing fee.
Which is how much?
$410.
And Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, you'd have to do the mailings all over again, it's...
Yeah, 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 it's like, yeah, so if you want to take a minute, you know, and think about it, if you want to...
Poor guy.
Should we, shall we take, shall we adjourn for a brief break and?
I mean, can we, can we call Aubrey or?
I've emailed him, so I'm guessing that, he works evenings and, you know, I'm not sure a phone call will get him on the...
We could rule an executive session, we could step out an executive session and let him, you know, think about it.
You have to have executive session on the agenda, so...
Yeah, you can't, you can't do an executive...
Right, 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 I forgot.
Ex tempore.
So just, what, if you, if you, while you think about it, Mr. Goncalves, if you want to take up approval of the December minutes?
We could do that, and if you, and if you want to, want to consult with anybody, Mr. Goncalves, you said...
I think he is. So...
Okay, so, we will, we will, we will tip, adjourn for the moment our hearing on ZBA 21-5259, to pick it up shortly, should I make a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Right, I'll make a second.
You're just modifying the agenda at this point.
Okay, all in favor of modifying our agenda as described?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so, we will move forward then to approval of minutes for December 22, 2020, which everyone has had in their packet or in their mailing, emailing. Are there any corrections of fact to the minutes? Hearing none, we will entertain an, a, a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor of approving the minutes as?
Aye.
Aye.
Were you not with us last month, Hal?
No, I was not, that's why I'm not voting on your abstaining. Yeah.
John, John, how did you vote on the minutes, I didn't catch it.
Pardon me?
Okay, I approve them.
You approve them, okay, so 401, while we have a couple minutes here, does anyone have any questions on the, I did send information about the eight American Bar, or Connecticut Bar Associates and Land use seminar. I don't know if, yeah, John, you've been there before, haven't you, didn't you go to the last time, it's usually held at Wesleyan University every two years, it's an all-day, Saturday 9 to 4, they have speakers. It's really a refresher course, like, it's good, is what I'm, you know, they'll talk about current case law, you know, new legislation, odd things that have occurred in different land use boards around the state. You know, you never not go away with learning something new, and they also give you, you know, a nice, thick reference reading material, it's, it's good stuff, especially if you, if you like land use. This year, it's, again, first Saturday in March, it's held via Zoom, you know, you can, yes, yes, yes.
So, this is, this version is dated 2017, so undoubtedly, the copy, the, the, what we'll get next year, or, you know, this year, is gonna be much updated.
Yes.
There have been a lot of, there's been a lot of stuff done, case law, that's happened in the intervening period, that
Yeah.
would be good for everybody who's got the time to look into it, to, to study.
And the town pays for it, so I'd like to submit Winchester's registration by February 1st, so if, I know Dave is gonna attend. If anyone else is interested, let me know, you know, and, you know, the town is happy, Phil, you're gonna, good.
Put me down.
Hey Pam, I'll attend too.
Good, it's really good, I know, I'm trying to sell it, and I don't know why. Really good.
This is a whole day thing?
It is, but you know, you come, you know...
It's online, it's online this year.
Yeah, which, which is nice, really.
It really is.
Yeah, I would be, I would be interested.
Okay, good, alright.
John? I will be interested also.
Oh, good. Yeah, good.
Yeah, I, I had gone to a couple of meetings like that, I, it was quite informative.
Isn't it?
Well, it gives you your parameters, you know.
Right.
Yeah, it was, it was very good.
Yeah. So, perfect, alright.
Okay, it's 7:20, are, are, Mr. Clausen, Mr. Goncalves, are you ready to come back?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I just want to confirm that, again, if I'm heard tonight, it gets rejected, I can be on the agenda for next month.
Yes.
Okay, and will I have to submit new packets and everything, or just the letters that go out?
A new application is if the first one didn't occur.
Was all the, all the existing copies of the plans, photographs, etc.?
Yes, yes.
Did that carry over?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, it's, it's, it's new.
Okay, so...
Wow. Sure, whatever. Throwin' dice here, let's go.
Rollin' dice.
A YOLO moment.
Okay, so, shall I give either, or do any of you want the screen, or do you want me to pull it up, just guide me with how you want to prepare your presentation? Present your presentation, do you want me to pull anything up, or?
Matt, do you want to take lead, or do you want me to just, who do you want?
You could start it off, and then I could get into some, some stuff here, so if you wanted to...
So I'll kind of take it in sections, I guess, the back section, so, we are, we bought a house that we plan on moving into full-time. It's, the way it's divided, doesn't leave a lot of room for a bedroom for my wife and myself, we wanted to add a second floor for that purpose. Renovating the back end to, for the kids' bedrooms. That area has to be reframed, you know, basically replacing everything along the way, the middle section's having less work done to it. But we, we're trying to move the doorway there also. I apologize, this is obviously not my forte. Trying to, so, it is currently a four-bedroom, two-bath house, we're trying to make it into a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath house.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
Aubrey English is joining.
Yeah, Aubrey.
Guys are rough.
Well, he's getting on, hold on.
We'll hold on.
Beginning of the presentation needs a mulligan anyway, so...
There he is.
Phil, if you want to just update Aubrey once he's connected to the audio.
Welcome, sir.
Well, Aubrey.
Needing my apologies.
That's okay, let the record show that Ms., that Aubrey English joined the panel at 7:20, what, Pam?
25.
7:25. We have only just started actually discussing application number 21-5259, the special exception for 522 East Wakefield Boulevard. We've only, Mr. Goncalves was confronted with the, the potential of having a, a four-person board and the, the challenges that present, so, your arrival has solved that issue, because we now have five seated members, we're seating, every, everyone with the exception of John Pollack, is seated tonight.
Okay.
So, and as I say, Mr. Goncalves had just started explaining a little bit about what he's trying to do, and Mr. Clausen is a technical person.
So, I'll restart, so, my wife and my family and myself are moving into the house, and we're proposing to build a 28 by 20 second floor addition to the westerlymost section of the house, the one facing the lake. We'd like to relocate the front door, it's about 10 feet to the left when you're facing the front door, build new front steps with a landing, add roof coverage over those entrance stairs, remove the rest, remodel, excuse me, remodel the rest of the house, including new heat windows, electrical, reconfigure the easterly portion, removing a kitchenette and laundry, and adding a laundry, essentially. That's gonna be reframed, reconfigured, but it's, there was a kitchen out there that we're removing, and we are adding a laundry. The, you know, it's siding windows, it's roofs, everything. We're staying, you know, we want to, we're gonna, if approved, we want to stay within the footprint of the, of the house, there's only one small extension of roof line that's about, I think it was 21 or 25 square feet, net adding to the, the existing roof. With, when, while we went through inland wetlands, you know, we already did go through inland wetlands, it was approved, involved removing some sidewalk in place of that roof and, and, and those things. I think, that's broad brush, that's, you know, big picture what the project is.
Obviously, Matthew Clausen for the record, also, Mike touched on a lot of the major points right there. The, the main phase that you guys are reviewing tonight, obviously, is the second story addition on the westerly side, 28 by 20, which he related to earlier, also, obviously, we've had the surveyor do calculate the height of the structure, so we meet all the height requirements for that. And also, by removing as part of the approval from wetlands, like he touched on, we'll be removing a section of walkway, a slight increase in the roof, but the net gain is actually, I think, 3% or 4% better in pervious coverages, I think he's 19, 9 right now, and it's, it'll be reduced to like 19.6, I believe, I don't have the map in front of me right now. But obviously, we're here in front of you guys tonight, because for a second floor addition, we need that special exception, so...
Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Wilt?
I don't see any issues with that at all, honestly. I've had a chance about an hour ago to go through the blueprints. I mean, it, he's not modifying the footprint. He's doing a bit of a trade off on a roof on the west side. That's it.
Anyone else? On the board? There being no other questions, uh, we will open the hearing now to anyone from the public who would like to speak to this application. Uh, if you use the Zoom feature of raising your hand, you could do that or you can just, uh, otherwise wave at us and you can be recognized and speak. Uh, any questions about the application should be, or any other questions or remarks at all should be addressed to me as opposed to any other member of the board or the applicant. Um, and, um, so we're ready to go. Uh, is it, I believe, Mr. Pollak, you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you Phil. Um, I was just, um.
Would you identify yourself for the record formally?
Yes, okay. For record, I'm John Pollak. Um, I'm at 502 East Wakefield Boulevard, Winston, Connecticut. And I lived here for approximately 25 years. Um, I know the previous individual, Ray Fugier, he's been there for many years. And, uh, his house has been there for many years and I could see that, uh, it does require some repair. One of my biggest problems is adding the new structure to the front of the, um, existing, uh, existing house. They were able to provide a, a photo and, um, I don't know if, uh, if we could just look at this photo that was provided. It shows the front of the, um, red house from the lake. It's 522 is on the bottom.
Wait, okay, the, the front is what faces the road?
No, the, it's from the lake. It's, it's going to be on the, um.
Okay, so the, so this, this photograph with the 522.
That's correct, yes.
It's actually facing the lake.
It's facing the lake, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Number, uh, what number photograph was that in the, uh, on the website Pam?
I don't see any, um, number on it, Paul.
Can we bring that up?
Why, why don't you have, um, him ask his question and then if.
Okay.
Me, you know.
Okay, here's, here's my question. For years, uh, I've lived here and I've been over on the property quite a bit. And way on the bottom over here is the lawn over here. He has, there's approximately 20 steps that goes up to the porch. And then once you go up to the porch, there's an entrance that goes into the house. So if you look from the lawn, straight at the house, you're gonna see that there's probably, these poles I assume are probably at least 12 feet. And then the structure over here is probably another 15 feet or something in that neighborhood. And, um, the individual wants to put on, I, it looks like it probably two and a half stories, um, just shown from his other picture over here that we have, um, which, which I brought up, um. I drew a red line over here and then you can see what he wants to add on. And I would like to know how tall that's, that's going to be.
You're referring to the, to the application documents, right? Just for the record.
Yes.
Uh, you know, these aren't pictures, these, you're talking about the photographs that were included as part of the application and then
That's correct.
Your question is on the height of the elevation. So, you know, Phil, all questions go through you.
Yes.
Um, so I'm not sure who you want to, if you want to answer it or what you want to do.
Uh, Mr. Clausen, do you want to address the building height? And I guess that Ms., I'm, I'm intuiting that Mr. Pollak is asking about what provision will be made to support the additional weight of.
That's, that's one thing Phil, and then there's another question.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Right.
Yeah, on the survey, we had, um, Peter Keefe, land surveyor, go up there and do the topography all around the existing structure right now. And then he calculated the height, uh, with the proposed addition on there. Um, and he came up with, and I don't, can't, Pam, can you pull up that, um, survey? Under the town's guidelines of a 30 foot height requirement, we are going to be, I believe, about nine inches underneath that. And it is shown on the survey there.
There.
No, that's the, uh, that's the architectural drawings there.
Okay, I thought maybe, um.
That's this single page site plan you're, that from Peter Keith, right?
Correct. He does have, I'd be, I don't know if he labels it in his average grade plane on there. I don't see his exact wording. I actually don't, um. Yeah, proposed building height. If you scroll a little bit to the right. Allowed building height is, uh, 244.8 elevation. Uh, actually, we're going to be at 243.5 is our average, uh, proposed building height. So we are actually, I, I misspoke, actually, we're, uh, 1.3 feet better than, uh, what's, what's allowed.
Because the average just, um, is, um, average pre-existing grade is 2.14.8. The regulations allow you to go to 30 feet and height is defined as the average midpoint of the roof from the average pre-existing grade. That's why it's important, um, for applicants to have their surveyors, um, gather that average pre-existing grade so that, you know, you, you know that the post-development zoning regulations, which is what this describes right here. So you want to take this figure and add 30 feet.
And, and our proposed building height comes up to 243 and a half. So we're actually, the average building height will be 28.9 inches or 28 feet nine inches is the average proposed height.
Okay, but that, um, thank you for explaining that, but, but I don't think you answered my question. My question would be, you probably could figure it, Matt, um, from the lawn, i- if you're standing on the lawn and you're looking up at the poles, you're looking up at the old house and then you're looking up at the additional floor and then you're looking up at, towards the roof line. My question is, how tall will that be?
So you're talking about from the lower elevation of the property?
That's correct.
Go back there, real quick, Pam. I believe you got the topography on there also of the lower elevation.
Hold on, I gotta minimize.
Does he? Let's see. You know, he didn't.
Well, here you got this.
Yeah, that's right along the side there. He's 212, but you're, I believe John's speaking about the lower.
Down here?
The wall or lower lawn section. Um, you know, you're probably, if you're, if you're 20 steps, you're, that's a hundred, that's, well. Oh, what was that other man?
Uh, it was something else.
It, it's, it's a solid, you know, 12 feet, maybe it's possibly even lower than that. Cause there's a number of steps. So you're probably 12 to 15 feet lower.
Does that respond to your question, John?
No, that hasn't answered the question. It, it just beats around the bush. And my question again is, if you are standing right on the lawn and after you did the addition to the house, how high would it be when you looked up from the lawn to the top of the roof? It would probably be over 40 feet. That's what I would say, at least 40 feet.
It looks like it would, it would be a bit that, yes.
Yes, it will, it will, it will be taller than 40 feet, but I don't believe the surveyor included that because we're only required to do right around the footprint of the house.
Yes. I understand.
Believe he included that number.
Yes, but I'm just, I'm going a little bit further and I'm just trying to imagine and, uh, how it's going to look after, if it's, if it's allowed, how, how it's gonna look and if you look around at the lake and if you drive around, you usually don't see houses, um, this tall, that close to the lake. Um, this will probably be like the tallest house.
Matt, this is the top of the, the lake wall elevation at 195.9.
Yeah, yeah, he's actually right in front of the stairs. He's showing 198. So, so it's, see right there, we're down at the stairs. So your, your grade right there was, prior to that was, uh.
16 feet.
Yeah, 214, yeah, average right there is, yes. So you're adding another 16 feet to it, so.
So not 40, you know.
Hey Pam, the photo that John was holding up, that's not, I don't see that on our, our website is under the meeting documents. Do you have that?
Um, it's not, did you look under the application? I mean, you have the paper copy, but, um, let me see if I, if it was.
Unfortunately, I got caught not at home tonight.
No, yep, I do have it, but it's, it's grainy, like, you know, I, I always like the digital copy, but yeah, I have it. Give me one moment and I'll pull it up. You know, it's not as, when, when you, when you send me, um.
Yeah, yeah, actually I'm.
You know.
Photos now, so.
Yeah. So I believe this is the one that John was referring to.
That's not it Pam, you gotta.
He's looking at the one where the house is, where the front of the, or the water side.
Okay, yep, I'll get there. Not this one?
Nope.
No, west elevation.
Let me go, let me go the other way. Too much pressure.
Yeah, it says, it's the one that says the deck facing water with 522 on it, Pam. I think you've just passed it. That's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. You gotta just turn it around 90 degrees or, okay, 180.
There we go. Okay. If I may, that, to John's question, or can I, I'm sorry, I have to put this through the, through you, um.
Yes, sir.
Okay, my question then, as a follow up to John's. The, uh, the peak of the new roof is roughly 40 feet, uh, from the lower elevation. The current peak or even the current area right above the windows, what's that height or how much? What are you adding to this? Is it 10 feet, eight feet? What's the, what's the additional height being added to this peak?
It's, it's a full another eight foot, uh, wall going up there and then the, then the roof line. So, um, I don't know, I believe Peter showed the average grade there. Uh, did he show that on there or no?
Do you want the elevation drawings? Like, I'm not sure.
Yeah, um.
Want me to pull that?
15 six overall.
An increase of 15 six, thank you.
Eight feet to the wall and the, and the, the balance is the roof line.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so.
Does that answer your question, John?
Yes, it answers that question, Paul. Thank you. My concern is, what I was trying to explain was that if we add like another floor and then we're gonna add another, um, I assume it's gonna be two floors, the attic will probably be livable. And then you have the roof line, you're gonna be adding at least probably 20 more feet to that and it's really gonna.
15 six.
15 six.
15 six, exactly.
Okay, and if you look, if you take a ride on the lake and you could always notice this house, uh, because it's how high it is. And if this addition is allowed on the front of the house, it's really gonna stick out like a, a sore thumb in my opinion. Um, it's something that, uh, the, the house is a pretty big house. I've been at it and, um, in the middle of it, um, Ray did make some type of an addition to that house. And I was wondering, um, why we're not adding this on closer to the road and obviously you want to be as close as to the lake as you could get. But I think in the long run, it's, it's gonna probably reduce the property value around the neighbors around the neighborhood in this area because of the, uh, the way the design, the design is going to be made. Un-sightly and it's, uh, something that's just being added on, uh, it wasn't part of the original structure. And especially when we have a porch that's being raised, um, over 12 feet over a huge boulder there and then it being added on to that, uh, to me, uh, I, I could see that it's probably, it could be allowed by, by our regulations. But the point I'm making and the point that the ZBA has, we have to make up some type of a decision so that the rest of the residents around the lake, uh, aren't going to be, um. Building it.
In other words, you were encouraging us, because for tonight, John, you are not on ZBA.
Because I know that.
Okay, uh, so you were encouraging us to take a decision that is, uh, that takes into account your concerns that you've raised with us tonight.
The concerns are, I, I think we could have some different type of, uh, structure instead of just adding on, piling it on to the front of the house and the front of the porch.
Shade.
And then, and then there's gonna be more shade, uh, the house is obviously gonna put more shade on other people's properties and, uh, to me, I, I think we could have a better design.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Uh, would anyone else from the public like to speak to this application?
And just so the members, there's some members of the public that are here, you have the ability to unmute yourselves. So if you're so inclined, please feel free, otherwise they may have just wanted to come and watch. So I, I, you know, if, if I've prompted and, um, so just bear that in mind.
Well, hearing no further comment from the public.
No, there, there's one more person who wants to speak.
Oh, okay.
It's my wife, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm not on the zoning board. I'm a neighbor here and.
Can you please identify yourself formally for our record?
Mary Pollak, I'm John's wife. And I live, I live here on the lake.
502, for the record, just your address.
502 East Wakefield Boulevard. And I'm not just concerned about this property. And I don't know if I'm allowed to speak now, but you never get other time. We, we're gonna be surrounded, our home, we're gonna be surrounded by two people building very huge structures compared to what's here. This is a lake and it originally had cottages on it. And then people want to come here, build their house there here and have these huge structures that for themselves, I mean, everybody should be able to have what they want. We know that on their own property, they'll build what they want. But I think that at some point, the builders, as well as the people should consider what they're doing to the rest of the lake. I mean, it's, you can't, yeah, there's all these rules you have and I just, I just think, I'm just surprised that people don't even think about that when they're building a home. Think about the people surrounding them. You, you want to be able to get along with your neighbors and, and it's not always easy all the time on the lake. But we, we try to respect each other's, you know, each, 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 each other's time here, that they want to have a good time and all that. But to build to something that just o- overpowers everybody else's homes. And we're gonna have two houses like that. We have another one coming up. I just think people ought to think about that. I tell you, I've been here on the lake and I've watched children play. I, and I have kids to my house. I don't have my own kids. I have a family that comes over all the time and they didn't have to have all, they don't have to, you don't have to have a lot of stuff to have a good time. You don't have to have a giant house to be happy. In fact, I'll tell you, the happiest people I've seen are the people that make do with what they have and just try to build beautifully around the house. A huge structure like that is, is, is an eyesore basically. I'm sorry. It's not a beautiful structure if it's not proportioned correctly. And if you go to places, people want to go to Europe and visit Europe because it's so beautiful there because the buildings were built in a way that was beautiful, that was structured, that was symmetrical and that worked. And I, I, I know this is an emotional thing, but I'm really upset by the fact that people don't seem to pay attention to that. It's, yes, we're all, we had a lot, all these rights, but there's a little bit of personal responsibility and being able to think about other people. And there's been a lot of huge structures being built around the lake, on both sides of the lake that really, to be honest, very nice with the people, but they're not that beautiful.
Thank you, Mrs. Pollak.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, I just want, I'm looking at the proposed rear elevation.
Yes.
And it sure as heck looks to me like that's over 30 feet. I mean, I see, it says here that it's, uh, 28.4 and it's splitting the top windows in half. And there's at least another four feet on top of that.
Hey, um.
I mean, is my, you know, they don't, they only go to the twenty-eight feet. They don't show you the remaining.
If I could speak on that?
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, the the town's building requirements, the thirty-foot is not to the peak. It is to the center line of the rafter, and I think Pam can clarify also. So that's why the measurement is shown that way on the drawings. It is not to the ridge height.
Well, I don't know, it just uh, it it just looks to me like uh.
Do you want me to pull up the height? I I can pull up the zoning regs so that you can read how height is defined by our regs. It it it's not to the peak. And it's an important distinction to make.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Interesting.
Yeah, and it's.
Interesting.
Since two thousand sixteen, while there's been modifications of um the zoning regs, that has been consistent. It it is from the average pre-existing grade to the uh midpoint of the roof. And yeah, you know, um, you've approved some of these, but let me find.
Now, are are we saying that uh pervious area is remaining the same or less or?
It's lessening.
Lightly less.
Less. Yeah, the insignificant amount.
So give me one moment and I have it because it's like page four. Right here. Okay.
Thank you for the clarification, Pam.
Okay. Um, with that, I will close the public comment. And uh.
Can I speak? Do you hear me?
Ms. Ward, oh, yes, please.
Hi, I'm uh Vicki Ward. I'm here with my husband, Brian. We're at five twenty-one. I, you know what? I would love to start the video. I don't think it's working.
It's okay, uh, five twenty-one.
Five twenty-one East Wakefield, yes, to the south of uh Michael. And with all due respect to Mary and John, and I understand how long you've been at the lake, I would like to say that presently, that home is an eyesore. Um, and I don't think anything's wrong with what Michael and his family are looking to do. This is going to be a young family that's gonna be raising their children, living there full-time, going to the school, being a taxpayer. And I just want to tell him that, in the board, that I am okay. My husband and I are okay with this.
Thank you, Pam.
And for the record, Phil, there, um, I I wasn't, sorry, I I um, I have a letter that was submitted from the neighbor at five oh four East Wakefield. Um, let me just uh January twenty-fifth. To whom it may concern, we are writing this letter in support of the proposed renovation. In addition, our new neighbors, the Gensalves family in Highland Lake, have requested to begin. We have spoken to them a number of times about their project. We find it to be a relatively limited scale. We welcome the significant improvement in appearance and the improvement in property value. Its neighboring properties, including ours, will undoubtedly enjoy. We have seen diagrams of the project and it looks fantastic. Because of the topography, the placement of our homes and that of our approximate neighbors, their second floor addition doesn't impede on our or any other neighboring properties' views. We would like the board to know that we fully support the project and look forward to the property's improvements. Best regards, Sean Stenziali.
Okay, thank you.
And then just don't forget to let the applicant have the last.
Yes, so we will now close public comments on this application. And the last word is for Mr. Gensalves or Mr. Clausen.
Um, just uh, I I hope that any questions are uh, you know, any questions you might have of us are answered. Um, just in listening to a couple of the statements, I want to make clear that that attic area is an attic. There's no ability for that to expand up there. There is a window up there, but it's for, it's aesthetic only, the, you know, it doesn't, it serves no function. Um, it, you know, a couple of the statements, it sounded like, you know, additional square footage. We we have no desire to be climbing that many stairs. We don't have any desire to climb as many stairs as we have, but that's the topography of the lake. Um, so besides that, I'll leave it to you folks. I appreciate your time. Uh, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing on, excuse me, ZBA application number two one dash five two five nine, the motion. A motion to grant a special exception pursuant to three dot C dot four dot B of the zoning regulations for application number two zero five dash five two five nine to allow the construction of a twenty-eight by twenty second floor addition and relocate the front door with overhang as per the drawing submitted uh for the property located at five twenty-two East Wakefield Boulevard. The motion being made, is there a second?
Second, second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion of this application? Of the motion, rather. Hearing none, on, we will, uh, we will take a vote. All in favor of the application signify?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that's, okay, so we have three in favor and two opposed, correct?
I think, I don't think you had to oppose it, but every, if you're for the motion, let's put our hands up again.
Ah, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, they gave unanimous.
We have unanimous four. I I'm I'm sorry, so.
It's hard to.
Thanks for the double heart attacks in the beginning and the end.
Better pick Michael up off the floor.
You okay, Michael? Bet you that hurt, didn't it? Wow.
Eric, thank you, have a good night.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, enjoy, enjoy your work.
Hopefully, yeah, thank you. Have a great night.
Okay. Moving on, we have no old business on the agenda tonight. Uh, is there any correspondence apart from the legal stuff? The law, land use training? Okay, uh, then we are, it it's, according to our bylaws, we are supposed to elect officers of in January. Um, so uh, would anybody like to take over being chair for me?
Oh, you're doing such a great job.
You out of your mind?
Well, then, yeah, someone may nominate me to be the chair.
I nominate.
Move, I'll move. I'll second.
I appreciate the support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Um, for vice, vice chair, um, I would like to nominate Paul Marino. Uh, assuming that he has been sworn in as a seated member.
I have been sworn in and will accept your nomination, sir.
Okay, well, if, I don't, do we have to second nominations?
Yes.
Yeah, you need a second.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of Mr. Marino as vice chair? Thank you.
Do I get to vote?
Yeah.
Uh, and.
John, are you voting on this? I I didn't.
I didn't notice, I didn't. John, you could, you could have.
I just want to register your votes.
Yes, I'm for that, for Paul.
Okay.
All right, and then John has agreed to continue in the secretary position, so I nominate him as our secretary.
Second.
All in favor, kindly signify?
Aye.
And approved. On, any discussion with our zoning enforcement officer?
I'm all you got right now, so. Hit me, I I.
What are you gonna do? You're gonna retire?
Hopefully, do you mind? No.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I do mind. You're doing a good job.
Um, there's, I I think I had reported about um, hold on one second. Um, there um, there was uh some activity that uh hasn't technically come under a cease and desist, but it was um close, but we got an application. Um. There's a Hartford Hospital, uh, you you all know, so I don't need to. With that, Hartford Healthcare opened their newest medical center building on eighty South Main Street last week. So um, yeah.
Outstanding.
You're mute.
No.
Pam.
Thank you, sorry. Yep. So that's it for me. Mark should be back soon. You should see him at your February meeting.
Give him.
Phil.
If you should.
I will, I will, thank you.
With that, um, it would be appropriate to have a motion to adjourn.
Go moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. We'll see you next month.